Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the West Dade Board of Trustees. As is our custom, we'll begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we begin, Clark Newbold, are there any changes or amendments to the agenda?
Trustees, Superintendent Rannells, there is no changes. I've attached all the documents that I have received. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustees, are there any changes or amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Section A of the agenda, which is an action item to reorganize the board due to the resignation of Dr. Newhoff. I also want to remind the trustees that we will repeat this process again at our annual meeting on January 12th as required in Idaho code. So the first item on our agenda is to elect a new board chair. Trustees, can I have a nomination for board chair?
I'll make a motion to elect Trustee Johnson as chairman of the board.
Thank you, Trustee Buffy. We have a nomination for Trustee Johnson. It's my understanding that we do not need to have a second. Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Trustee Johnson as the next board chair? Please say aye. Aye. All right, I think I heard five ayes. Any nays or abstentions? Four ayes, I mean, thank you. Counting wrong. All right, well, congratulations, Chairperson Johnson. I think we can take the rest of the meeting over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. It feels weird. So I'm going to do the next item on the agenda and then I wanted to, we'll go on to the discussion. So the next item on the agenda that we have is to elect a board vice chair. Is there any nominations? Open it up for nominations for a board vice chair. Trustee Buffy.
I'll make a motion to elect Trustee Ozuna as vice chairman of the board.
Trustee Ozuna has been nominated as the board vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, again, this doesn't require a second, so I'll open for, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, on the board votes, aye. Seeing there's no other trustees to oppose or abstain, we'll consider this a passing motion of four to zero. Thank you. Before we move on, I wanted to open it up because we just elected new leadership for Trustee Ozuna. If you had anything you wanted to say as vice chair, I did want to have a few words just as chair, but I wanted to open up to Trustee Ozuna first.
I do not, thank you.
Thanks. It feels like at this point we should say something, right? And so I wanted to, I wrote down some thoughts and I wanted to just talk about something because I think board chair has been a lightning rod role for us this year and I wanted to just talk a little bit about where we are and where we're going, or hopefully going. So there's some really great things that have happened this year and I think it's been hard to see those in some of the issues that have arisen to the top from a public standpoint. First of all, right now, we are one of the few schools in this, or school districts in the Treasure Valley here that have kids in school right now. And that's a testament to the principals, the teachers, the support staff in our buildings, as well as all of the administration and this board for focusing on maintaining and trying to keep that goal moving and actually happening. The next is that none of us had any experience in a pandemic plan, right? We never, we never lived through this experience, not a single one of us. So, and we, as a school district, were always focused and always had to be focused frankly on just trying to do the best we had with the money and the staff we had and we've always been in a situation where being able to be prepared for a pandemic wasn't even on the radar. So what's happened since then is we've all learned, right? We've all gotten better, we've gotten exponentially better. And we've had to do that and there may, there is still more to do. But our pandemic plan that's there right now, it's flexible, it's agile, it weaves in medical expertise and educational expertise and it uses our data to support our kids' education. And that's a testament to us all pivoting and trying to figure out how to be better in this situation. And the last is that, this is a tough spot. I can't, I can't even express in words how much right now we miss Phil and Steve. And it really saddens me that the pandemic is the reason for their departure. We've had the same thing happen in our schools and it's just, it's frustrating and also just not, I can't, I can't even get the words out. But it's just, it's really unfortunate. So how do we move forward in all of that? How do we find better ways, right? Because we're not getting out of this anytime soon. We need to find ways to better, find alignment with each other and with, as stakeholders, with our stakeholders. Like I said before, the chair role and Trustee Cloppenstein knows this, probably has, well, has the most experience in it. It's been a lightning rod, a no-win situation for whoever's in that role. And so all I can promise for being in this role is to provide kindness and patience, listening and support for those around me and I hope that you guys will all give me the same thing back. I think there, I just wanted to leave with, close it out with one quote. And it says, we can't, it's from Ronald Reagan. It says, "We can't help everyone, but everyone can help someone." And I think that's really the only way we're all going to get through this together, is leveraging the power of each other to help everyone that we can. So with that, we can move on to discussion about the pandemic operating plan. All right, Mr. Heller, are you going to walk us through a little bit of the follow-up first?
So, board chair, trustees and Superintendent Rannells, I can certainly answer questions that come up if there are questions. I would say, you know, at our meeting last week, the board indicated there was a need for some additional time to review the plan and asked us also to have a legal review of our document. The legal review was completed and we submitted to you any of the changes that needed to be made based on those conversations last week on Thursday, December 10th. It is our recommendation that the board approve the West Dade School District pandemic operating plan. And additionally, I might state that it might make sense for the board to consider authorizing Dr. Rannells to make changes to the plan as conditions warrant. We, you referenced the flexibility that's built into the plan. We reference in the plan that the plan will change. There will be things as we learn more about the virus, as maybe a vaccine becomes readily available, things are going to potentially change. We sure hope they will change in the community around us and that may require some changes to this plan in the future. And I know that this has been, feels like a never-ending process to come back here and continually reconsider what we're doing. And so I would, it may be something, I think Dr. Pay brought it up last time, that we potentially could talk about authorizing that the operating plan changes are made by the superintendent and then brought forward to the board. But that obviously is, as a word, your decision to make. So at this time, I would honestly, I would answer any questions that come from the trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. I'll open it up for questions from trustees.
Mr. Heller, thank you for the extra time. I know for me, I needed some extra time to look through that framework for decision-making and I like the language that's in there. I also like and appreciate the changes that were made to, you know, the sections that came out of the legal review. If there's not any feedback from the other trustees, there is a section of the plan that I would like to come back to and talk about related to coming back to school for the reintroduction of middle and high school to all day, every day. But I wanted to save that conversation in case there's anything else to be discussed.
Is there, I don't think, do you need a response on that one? Okay.
No, I don't think so.
Is there any other questions or for Mr. Heller on the other sections of the plan besides the middle and high school return section? Trustee Buffy?
No, this is more procedural with regard to if there is a condition where the superintendent can make changes to the plan. Just wanted clarification on what that process would look like.
Thank you. I think depending on the language in the motion would depend upon the level of the changes that the superintendent, if there is a motion around giving the superintendent some authority, it's the language in the motion around what level of changes the superintendent would be able to be given. Dr. Pay had made a suggestion last meeting around procedural changes. Is that your question, is whether or not administration's recommending that same level or?
Yes, and I just want to ensure that the board would be notified about the change as it was, maybe right, you know, before it happened so that we were aware and if there were any clarifications needed that those could be taken care of ahead of time.
Thank you. I think, again, I think if the language requires that, it would happen. So that's, that's how we've handled those in the past around different notifications, so. Are there any other questions before we talk about the middle and high school section? Trustee Ozuna?
I just want to make a statement that I support giving authority to the superintendent to make some changes in the plan. So if we can work through what that looks like, either now in discussion or in action. But I do have support for giving her some authority to handle those things because changes will come up and we do need to have the flexibility there to move on those.
Trustee Cloppenstein, you have anything? You're good?
Press the right button. No, I actually support the plan wholly. I think it makes total sense. It's a switch from what we had before, puts us away from some hard stops, allows for flexibility in the classrooms. And if it's something that Dr. Rannells feels comfortable with, I feel comfortable with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think since we've had everybody have an opportunity, if we wanted to specifically talk about the middle and high school section as a board, is that where your intent was, Trustee Ozuna?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Let's just open it up. Maybe the first piece is to have you walk through your thoughts and then we can move from there.
So first I want to say I really appreciate what is in this plan. I appreciate the actions that are happening in our school already, even before the plan came out. I mean, our, the leaders in our schools and our students and our staff, I mean, they were already following much of this. I know that it's, I think we've made improvements to our processes. I think that our building walkthroughs have added some things. I think all of that is really, really great. And so, you know, I support kind of all of that that's in here. What gives me pause around the plan are the criteria that are laid out for getting middle school and high school back into the classroom all day, every day. I will say, I don't believe that we are in a place where we're ready to do that and I want to make that clear. Like I don't think that we're ready to make that happen yet. My concern is that the way that the language is written, I don't think that it actually allows us to do that. What I am hearing from administration and what I'm seeing in the actions of administration is also their support for moving in that direction. What I'd like to do, or what I would propose doing, is taking this piece of it out of the plan and sending it back to administration to work on some things that you might be comfortable with that actually allows for us to move ahead when you're ready to. Or when, you know, as a district, when things align that enable us to safely and operationally get our kids back into the classroom. In the actual language, the thing specifically that concerned me, the language around successful physical distancing. We know that that is a challenge. It's a challenge with our fourth and fifth graders. We already knew that. I think it's a challenge even for K through three in some situations. As we move to middle school, it's going to be a bigger challenge. As we move to high school, you know, it's larger. I mean, I, if we're honest, like, we're not going to have physical distancing there. And so if we were to move our kids back, we need language that allows us to move ahead. The other part that I'm worried about in here is no clusters. I mean, it specifically says no clusters and even when community numbers were low, even when community numbers were in green and yellow, clusters happen. And so what I don't want to have happen is for our staff members or our parents or whoever's looking at this, I don't want them to read this and think, "We're going to remain in hybrid, so I'm going to stay where I'm at." If they're uncomfortable with moving ahead when we're able to move ahead, then they need to know that so that they can make some different decisions. And then I think that we just need language here that allows us to move ahead when we get to that point in time. I put together some language and I shared it and it's attached to the agenda and so, I mean, you're all welcome to use that or come up with some other language. I don't want to come up with language in a motion because I'm, I don't know, the details of the operations. And I don't want to set you up in a situation where I propose something that can't be done. So I guess where I am leaning tonight is toward approval of the plan that is amazing in so many ways with taking out from where it starts, West Dade School District will not begin the process of considering daily in-person learning, take out that section, the criteria for middle school and the criteria for high school, and send that back to administration to take another look at that. I believe that we're not in a time crunch to put that together because today, we're not ready for the next steps there.
Thank you, Trustee Ozuna. Any other, we've got trustee discussions. Do any other trustees want to discuss? Thanks.
You okay, Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure. Thank you very much. I do understand and I, what you're saying is based on the emails you'd sent out and Sheri had sent out a copy of the emails along with other content. So I got to read your comments over to Dr. Rannells about this. As far as the comment about, well, what you had said, and I know it's not available so we can't display it, which is kind of a shame. But what you had for the preamble about West Dade District not begin and your version was to begin, it's glass half empty, glass half full. I mean, it's fine, I really have no issues there. But, but there's two things I do have a concern about. One is when we're talking about physical distancing or no clusters, at that point, in my view, my humble view, is that we're starting to move away from the scientific and professional guidance we've been given. And if we start to do that, then I think it then weighs on this board where are we starting to move away into an area where we have no credible guidance to follow into? Down a path where we don't have medical support, there is no scientific support, we're moving away from CDC guidance at that point. I remember you made a comment about the number of days that we might have for people to be in in seclusion if they were exposed to COVID. That makes sense, it's CDH guidance there. But when we're talking about no clusters, basically the idea of there being a cluster is that's when you really have to tamp it down. Because if you don't tamp it down when there is a cluster, then the chance for really being able to close or being forced to close a school or a classroom or exposing a wide number of kids and teachers to danger becomes a really credible problem at that point. So to me, clusters is a challenge. We need to have that in. And physical distancing, that's the triad, right? Wash hands, physical distance, wear a mask. Now, there's a little bit of discussion about whether it's three feet or three yards or six feet or whatever for physical distancing. Definitely we have to follow the CDC/CDH guidelines on that, in my view. And I just feel like if we start to move away from the guidance we've been given, the professional guidance we've been given, then we're starting to go down a territory where we're basically trading off the safety of our teachers who are more exposed and the safety of our older students especially for in-person and class education. And that's a moral equivalency I just can't square. So to me, you have to have that safety, that foundation has to be there. And if we're going to move away from clusters, then, then it starts to, then it's kind of like, well, what are we doing? And so it makes a concern for me. So anyway, I just had to share this.
Before we, Troy, I believe we can click on the agenda link and actually pull up the language. So I don't know if every trustee saw it. So since it is attached to the agenda, could we do that in the additional items? And I don't know if every trustee got a chance, not that this is the language, but it may help to, just for clarity purposes, for Trustee Ozuna to walk us through kind of some thinking if you're comfortable, if you want to, if you're comfortable with that.
Sure. And you're right, Trustee Cloppenstein, in that very beginning, you know, I changed it from a will not to a will. But more importantly in there is I, I took the language word for word out of the introduction that had the intention of the district. So it was with the intention to move all students here. And the reason that I did that is because I, I want to make sure that our parents and our staff our staff know that that's our intention to get there if we're able to get there. And if somebody is looking specifically for the middle and high school plan, I don't know that they'll necessarily see that in the introduction. And so I, so more importantly than the will or will not is that first part of the sentence. Getting away from that, one of the things around clusters, clusters defined in our plan, and it's two or more related cases in, what is the word, Mr. Heller, that's used there in a, I don't want to say pod, it's not a pod, but in a
Yeah, I'd have to tell you.
A classroom, a team, but the trick there is that they're related cases.
Yes.
That could be two cases that came from carpooling. That could be two cases that came on a bus. That could be two cases that were in a classroom or at a shared lunch table. And to stop the entire district from moving ahead with middle school because we had two cases in one elementary school, I think that that's a really high bar that we will never hit. We also will never hit that physical distancing requirement across the board. And if it's our intention, the way that this is worded, I mean, we're better off to just say, "We're not going back to school for all of this year," because this language doesn't allow us to get there. I don't believe we're ready to go right now. I mean, I think we all are on the same page with that. We're not ready to move ahead today. I don't actually know what the criteria is either that will allow us to move ahead. It might be that our hospital workers are vaccinated, along with our most vulnerable population, and our teachers have plexiglass at the high school level where there's more students in. I mean, I don't know what that criteria looks like, but if we were able to meet that criteria, right, maybe our community numbers go down really low unexpectedly for whatever reason. I mean, whatever might happen that allows us to move ahead, we want to be able to move ahead, and this language is going to hold us back from that. Or we move ahead with language here that shouldn't allow us to move ahead because there are some pretty absolutes in here. So that's why I would ask for, and I don't have the answer, that's why I would ask for administration to take it back and talk through those things and bring it back to us, because I do think we have time to talk through those things.
Thank you. Is there any other trustees want to continue in the discussion? Trustee Buffy?
I guess I understand that position, but I also feel like this is a living document. We are setting a high, high standard, and I don't imagine that the grading, or the criteria is going to stay that way. I think things are still going to change a lot because of the vaccines have been started on a really small scale now, but once that starts to really play out, and then also, you know, I would be interested to see, I wouldn't be surprised if there was some staggering of grade levels coming back, just like with what happened with the elementary schools. If you did sixth grade, 12th grade, I mean, all of those, I just think that there's going to be more to it than what this criteria is, but this criteria is just a high standard of what we know would be ideal. I do have a question of why there wasn't a timeframe applied to the clusters, so that's something that could be addressed to Brett after the discussion, but I think that I'm supportive of the plan. It's not perfect, but I do think that it will be, we'll be changing it as we go, and so in that, in that aspect of it, I support it.
Mr. Heller, do you want to respond to Trustee Buffy's question?
Sure.
Thank you.
Chairperson Johnson, trustees, we did discuss during the COVID Task Force today, actually, some conversation around adding 30 days to that language regarding no clusters. So we did have some conversations today of putting a time period there. I think there is definitely some concern of no clusters ever means we never get to move students back to school, so adding in a 30-day period, so within the last 30 days, so that we can start to feel like we are to a point where we're not seeing those spikes happen. I think, as Dr. Pate often puts it, when you have clusters, that's kind of your first warning sign that something in your operational plan at that building is off, and you might need to reevaluate something that's happening. If you're having a cluster in a classroom, what are the practices that are happening within that classroom that potentially are creating that cluster? What we know, I mean, what I believe we know really well is the number of clusters and the number of exposures we're having right now are manageable with only half the students in the school for secondary. When I say manageable, easy for me to say, those administrators are working very hard every day, those nurses are working very hard every day to do that contact tracing. We just know that if we bring all of them back, that workload will amplify because the number of students you're going to be contacting will go up just due to the physical distancing requirements for that contact tracing. So we have talked about the 30 days as being something we would consider. In terms of the overall discussion, I don't have a problem with the idea that this portion, if it was removed, that would give us more time to come up with some criteria and bring that back at some point in the future. I would agree with Trustee Ozuna that we aren't in a hurry on this right now. Where we are with the virus in our, in our community at large, and our own data that we know, we're not ready to bring secondary schools back anytime soon. So we do have some time if that was the will of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Trustee Ozuna?
One of the things that I think is missing in this language that I do think is important is to add a component around the operational readiness as a board and even as community. We don't know exactly what that looks like. We know that we have severe shortages with substitutes. We know that we have high absences. We know that as absences go out, things become more difficult for the teachers to support the kids that are quarantined. I don't know the impact on bus, I mean, there's so many things operationally, I'm sure you could talk for 20 minutes about operation, probably longer, for what's out there, but I do think when you set up that criteria, I would encourage you to look at an operational component of that, that you can evaluate for real true readiness in moving ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Heller, I actually have a question for you based on the discussion. If we were hypothetically in a situation today where, let's use the term, and though I hate to use it, we were in a yellow or a green, would this language preclude us from actually opening up?
So Chairperson Johnson, trustees, I would say that, yeah, you're probably going to be, as of right now, if all of a sudden tomorrow we were in, the community was in green, CDH moved Ada County into green, we still aren't able to meet physical distancing expectations. So you're absolutely right in that way. And that's, I think this goes back to something we talked about previously, different meeting, that a lot of what was in this plan is written for the fact that we're in a pandemic that is, the cases are going up, not going down. And so everything is kind of written of, as of right now, with the current reality we're living in, the criteria for opening middle school and high school to daily in-person needs to be a fairly high bar because of what we're dealing with now. But as that changes in the community at large, then the criteria often also will need to potentially change. And so I think what I'm hearing from Trustee Ozuna is, well, then maybe we need to identify, what is the criteria out in the community at large also that would, before, you know, what level of community spread would we even start the conversation about bringing our middle school and high school students back? And then if we get to that place in the community at large, what are the additional criteria, including operational criteria, that would need to be in place? And that could be a way we approach it. But, yeah, you're absolutely right. This is criteria based on the fact that we're in a very high cases per 100,000 in our community at large, and so the criteria are high for that very reason. But as the community spread goes down, and we're all hopeful that that does happen, and that the vaccine becomes readily available and all those things, that clearly then it would make sense that the criteria also would need to change, and I think that's why we wanted to include language that represents the fact that the criteria will change. I mentioned in the COVID Task Force this morning that perhaps just adding some language in this section to reinforce the idea that not only will the plan change, but as we learn more about the virus, as the community spread changes, as the vaccine becomes readily available, this criteria may also change. And that is something that, you know, depending on how the board decides to act tonight, we may, that's an option we could certainly do.
Thank you. Is there other, Trustee Ozuna?
Thank you. You know, one of the things that, a lot of the feedback that we're all receiving is that we say one thing and then we change it. And I think that we have to because we're learning as we go, and, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why that has happened. But knowing that that's a real problem for people that are counting on certain things, I would caution us for being so absolute in the way that we write things, and even when you go back, I mean, depending on what the board action is, but if you have an opportunity to take this back and look at that language, and what might the community spread number need to be, or maybe we don't want absolutes in there, because the real answer is that we're, our goal is to get kids back in the classroom when we can, so we're going to continue to monitor everything as we go, because that's really what we're doing, right? And we need flexibility to be able to move on that when and if we're able to. And Trustee Klaupstein's right, I mean, we have to protect our staff, and we have to protect our students, and that's a piece of that. What we don't know is what that criteria should be, nor does CDH, because they've changed it, nor does CDC, because they've changed it. So we need the ability to make changes as we go. So we've got to be careful in being so absolute, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other trustee thoughts? Trustee Klaupstein?
Yeah, I do just want to follow up on just one thing that Trustee Ozuna had said, which I think is actually very smart, and maybe we can actually come to, come to a decision even tonight, if we were to say that clusters is literally discussing a 30-day period, so if we were looking at the past rolling 30 days, if we didn't have clusters, then suddenly that checkbox is met. Would that be fair?
Trustee Ozuna?
Trustee Klaupstein, we still can't meet that physical distancing requirement. So in Chairman's example, Chairwoman's example, if we were in green, for example, we still wouldn't be able to move ahead. So, I mean, we could play around with language, and then I guess I'll ask you, would you like the trustees to play around with language, or would you prefer time to look at that and come up with something that operationally we can support?
Mr. Heller?
So Chairperson Johnson, trustees, honestly, I think there's probably a good point made that I feel comfortable with, is that we do have some time on our side right now in terms of this. So, I mean, I would also defer to our superintendent, but I'm comfortable with the idea that a plan, this plan is approved tonight with this language removed, and then we bring our administrators, our health services folks together and start talking about, let's really talk about what the criteria really are in terms of when are we going to be able to start talking about middle school coming back and then, and high school coming back. So I'm more than happy to continue to engage in that conversation, and again, I do believe we don't, this is not something that's urgent as of, as of right now. Clearly, this criteria is approved tonight. We're not moving forward with bringing anybody back any more, any faster than we could likely bring new criteria forward at some point in the future. So I'm comfortable with that, but I would also defer to our superintendent.
Dr. Reynolds? You're good? You're good with that? Okay. I'm just putting it on the record using the mic, so, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the action portion of the agenda. Sheri, you're going to have to keep me honest over here, so if I mess it up, let me know. So the first, I'll open it up for the first action item on the agenda. Do I have a motion? Trustee Klaupstein?
Thank you. So I move that, that we acknowledge the trustee resignation in Zone Four, and that there is a board declaration of vacancy in Zone Four as well.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Trustee Buffy seconds the motion. Made my trusty Klaupstein. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have to go through nays and ayes? And, okay, thank you. The motion passes four to zero. All right, we'll move on to the second item on the agenda, the pandemic operating plan. I'll open it up. Do I have a motion? Trustee Ozuna?
I actually have two thoughts around this, and I'd like to break it up into two motions, if that's okay?
That's okay, yes. Thank you.
The first motion would be to approve the really great things that are in that pandemic operation plan, with the exception of the language right before the criteria, that sentence that's there, plus the two paragraphs around the criteria for the middle school and high school return. So my motion is to approve the plan, as is with the removal of this section, and I'd like for administration to take that back and work on that piece.
Thank you, Sheri. Zach, you good on the motion? Do you, you've got, we're good, okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Trustee Buffy?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion seconded by Trustee Buffy. Is there any discussion?
Just for the, just for the record, would you mind just documenting the page number?
Oh.
Just for
Sure. Troy, can you scroll down and we'll put the page number on there? Thank you, Trustee Klaupstein.
Page six.
Page six, thank you. So, no, you're good, I think you had it. Thank you. So is there any other discussion? Trustee Klaupstein?
I just want to confirm, so what we're basically approving tonight is we are approving the pandemic plan as it stands, but with no return criteria for students in middle and high schools. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
And that we're tabling it for a later time?
We're asking administration to come back with
Okay.
Language.
Would it be fair to just say tabling for a future time for that section? If that would be okay? All right, just so we'd be clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got that? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Trustee Ozuna, second part of your motion?
The second part of my motion has to do with the need for us to move as we get more information. For example, we know that the CDC made changes related to the quarantine period that CDH is adopting, and we're going to need to make changes around that. So my second motion is to grant authority to the superintendent to make procedural changes to the plan as conditions warrant. And that goes with an assumption that we'll be provided with updates before that happens and the things that we would regularly do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Klaupstein. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. And that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which, by the way, somebody new has to take the role, so I'll pass the mantle to whoever gets to make the adjournment every meeting, because it can't be Zone Two anymore. So do I have a motion?
We should let your new, your first meeting go at least an hour.
No, that's perfect. That's success, in my mind.
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second, please.
Seconded by Trustee Klaupstein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, we don't, do we have a discussion on adjournment? Wait, no? Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's okay. It's one of those things where I'm, you never know. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.